All right, it's nine o'clock. I'd like to call to order the August 16th meeting of the Sling County Commission with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson. Commissioner Weath.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Yes, ma'am.
Now if we'd all stand for a flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by my nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now on the citizens' input portion of our meeting, any citizens who wish to speak on county government business, use the limited three minutes. Anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of disposition of property, approval of contracts, agreements, and MOUs, approval of payrolls presented, approval of public forum agenda as presented. Any commissioner wish to address any of these consent items?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, we'll move on into our action items. Item number one.
RFA 178-22 RCB projects right-of-way acquisition with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. So, my office has designed seven drainage structure replacement projects around Sling County. In your packet, you should have the project plan title sheet, and it shows the locations at each one of these projects. So, these projects all will be, the existing structure, yeah, you see it up there on the screen there. Each one of these projects will be replaced, the existing structure will be replaced with a reinforced concrete box structure. To construct and maintain these projects, additional permanent road right-of-way and temporary construction easements will be necessary. So, the Road and Bridge Department is requesting the approval to acquire these easements as shown on each one of the plan and profile sheets that also is in your packet. So, if you look at each one of these plan and profile sheets, you'll see areas that are shaded red. This is the area of the proposed permanent road right-of-way, and then the area with the green shading is the temporary construction easements. And the temporary construction easements, those just allow permission for the contractor to use that property to construct a project, and as soon as the construction is completed, that easement will go away. All landowners have been directly contacted by me to discuss the scope of their project and the need for the easements. Each landowner has agreed to sell or donate their land as shown on the easement acquisition summary table. So, you should have an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven in your packet, and it gives the landowner name, the area of acquisition, the cost per acre, and then their total right-of-way cost for each parcel. So, for the permanent road right-of-way, what we offered for the dry crop land was $4,500 per acre. For pasture land, we offered $2,500 per acre. And then for non-productional land, that was asked to be donated. And non-production land is areas where it's just trees or channel or even like a grass waterway. We asked for that to be donated. And then for the temporary construction easements, we offered $100 for any production ground, and this will compensate the landowner for any kind of crop damage that may occur during construction. And then all non-production property, we requested to be donated. Alternatives for action would be to approve the permanent and temporary easements as indicated in staff recommendation; two, to approve a different offer for each parcel; three, deny purchase in easement and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends purchase in easements as shown in the easement acquisition summary table for a total right-of-way cost for all projects, all seven projects of $664.50. We request the cost to acquire these easements will be coming out of our bridge construction 125 account.
All right, questions of the commission?
Yes, and just looking at all the red and shaded areas, I know there's more than that acreage. Was some of this donated?
So, yeah, so a lot of it was donated. So, you know, again, if it's in, even it's in the red, the permanent, which is the permanent right-of-way easements, if it's non-production ground, so if it's, you know, gets into trees, you know, they're not using it for crops, they're not really using it for pasture, that type of work is, they donated.
Okay.
They donated that.
Thank you. There's quite a bit there, yeah.
Yes.
And it's apparent that these seven projects, the landowner has worked well with you, and you've worked well with them, and probably they're appreciative and want the upgrades.
Yes, yes, they're excited about the upgrades. On several of them, you know, they said, "Well, I'll work with you if we can get maintenance to do this project," you know, "clean this ditch out." And so, we had a couple of those, and maintenance was very good at, you know, working with me, trying to obtain this right-of-way of getting in there and cleaning the ditch out, ran a little more rock to a road that they requested, and so, it was a good process.
Awesome. We don't have to go build no Ponzo or nothing?
No.
Okay.
No.
Great, thank you.
All right, any comments of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the permanent and temporary easements as presented in the attached easement acquisition summary table.
Second motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 178-22 RCB projects right-of-way acquisition. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Item number two.
RFA 179-22 bid award for Donmire and Waterwell Road improvements with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So, the Sling County Road and Bridge Department requests to award the bid for Donmire and Waterwell Road improvements. Sealed bids were open on August 9th this year at 11:00 a.m., and we received two bids. In your packet, you should have a bid tabulation, which provides details of the bids. So, this project is located at the intersection of Donmire and Waterwell Road and extends about 2,100 feet to the north and 1,800 feet to the east. The scope of this project involves roadway reconstruction and replacing three drainage structures. Along with this project, to the south a half a mile, there is another reinforced concrete box replacement project that we did include with this project. You know, so the contractor has until September 29th of next year to complete the project. I've talked with the contractor, the low-bid contractor here, and it says it does look like it will be at next year. Construction timeframe is when they'll be able to get to it. And then the construction should last about five or six months, five or six months. We'll have to do some construction sequencing to make sure that we can get everybody has access to their property, and so, that's going to slow down construction a little bit, but it's kind of just necessary in order to get people to their property. Alternatives for action would be accept a bid as indicated in staff recommendation; two would be to accept a bid from a different contractor or reject the bids and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends accepting the unit prices from the bids submitted by Reese Construction Company for an amount of estimated work to equal $894,578.66. Funds for this project would be taken out of the 125 account, special bridge construction.
All right. Many times on these bridge constructions, they enjoy working in the winter months. Is that true?
They do work in the winter, at least for when they do a lot of our projects, they do them in the wintertime. But we're getting into an environment that's very unique, you know, so every once there's got a lot of work out there, I wouldn't say this is necessarily going to be built in the wintertime. You know, and this is a little bit longer, bigger project than a regular reinforced concrete box project. So, it's, there's a lot of dirt moving on this one here, and so, you know, when you're moving dirt, a lot of dirt, it's kind of risky to move it in the wintertime. You know, the last couple winters, you're able to do a lot of dirt work because the temperatures have been warm enough, they can get in there and do some work. But we can run into those winters where everything's just a, you know, a frozen chunk of earth, and you're not moving anything. And so, you don't want to, so it's kind of up to the contractor whether they want to risk that or not. So, it's, right now, what the contractor says, Reese Construction, they're just saying it's going to happen sometime next year. It's about the best they can do right now.
I assume there'll be some road closing for a period of time?
Yes, yes, yeah. So, yeah, like I says, there's going to be actually, because we've got a phase, at the intersection project that extends north into the east, we'll have to phase that into two different phasing of construction. So, in each one of those, we've got to close different parts of the road, you know, but it's mainly just to try to get people access to their property. So, if we do it all at one time, then we would run into some issues.
Are there questions of the commission? Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for Donmire and Waterwell Road improvements to Reese Construction Company for an amount of estimated work to equal $894,578.66. Second motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 179-22 bid award for Donmire and Waterwell Road improvements. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.[1039.24][1039.61][S04, 10:00]
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number three.
RFA 180-22 capital improvements for nonprofit grant awards with Philip Smith, Haynes County, Administrator.
Good morning, County Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So, this is the third round of competitive grants that we have taken applications for under the county's coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund from the American Rescue Plan Act. You may recall that we started first with grant awards for water and wastewater projects last December. Earlier this summer, we awarded projects for what we called safer and healthier projects for public safety, criminal justice, and mental health, and these awards are for capital improvement projects for local nonprofit organizations. Recovery, not only of the business sector, but also of the nonprofit sector, was a high priority for the local community in the survey that we did to put together our plan for expenditure of the ARPA funds. And so, we have gone through this process to accept applications for capital project improvements from the nonprofit community. We received 19 total applications. We convened an independent review committee, which consisted of John Shea from North Central Regional Planning Commission, Lori Sellers-Trenholm from the Douglas County Community Foundation, and Deb Wood from the Central Kansas Extension District. And I would like to extend our thanks to those three individuals for helping us out with this review. The review committee met last week to discuss the applications, and they are recommending funding for the top seven applications that do various different projects. I could go through them if you wish, but at the bottom line, it's a total of $267,631.41, which is slightly above the $250,000 that we had allocated for these grants. I did make contact with the number seven ranked applicant. They may be able to reduce their project, but I think it's also pretty safe to go ahead and award the full amount because we have other funds that we have available within the ARPA fund that would cover the extra $17,631. So, again, there are 12 other applications that we will not be able to fund with current resources, but I have let those folks know that if we do free up any money along the process, we'll go back and reconsider as we did with the water and wastewater grants. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, or I could go over the specific grant applications if you would like.
Questions of the commissioners? Nope. I'd like to say, all the different ARPA committees that you've put together, we truly, as a commission, appreciate their work. That's time that they've given up to help guide us through this, and we are appreciative of that.
Absolutely.
Any comments from the public or questions? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the grants as presented and direct the staff to return with the agreements.
Second motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 180-22 capital improvements for nonprofit grant awards. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four.
RFA 181-22 capital project funds for broadband infrastructure fund request with Farrell, I'm going to chop his last name, Oteno, management intern.
Good morning, Farrell.
Good morning, Commissioner. So, one of the projects that I'm working on is broadband project, and I think COVID-19 taught us a lesson, and as a county, rather, the commission authorized $400 in funding from the county American Rescue Plan for the purpose to address the community digital divide. So, what the county staff did was to form a broadband task force. So, the broadband task force was formed in March 1st, 2022, and the task force has been meeting regularly to come up with a plan to leverage county ARPA funding with other state and federal broadband funds. So, one of the steps that the task force did was to engage providers of broadband services, since the county doesn't have technological muscles in order to try and identify the area that are served and underserved. And that's why the first step, the broadband task force, was to engage all the provider within the county. So, majority of the provider that we met, we met the provider via Zoom, and we also had individual meeting with different providers. So, the majority of the provider identify the northeastern region of the county has underserved. So, we were approached by three provider, that is, the Ideatech, the Nextech, and the Cox. So, the Ideatech proposal is to install fiber that will connect approximately 580 location in the northeast Salina County, while the Nextech proposes to serve 226 locations immediately north of Salina, then 153 location west of Salina. Cox proposes to install fiber to approximately 772 location in three areas, north, south, and west of Salina. So, therefore, staff recommended that commissioner commit a portion of funding available for this project. So, based on the approximation area of the county served by this project, Ideatech asked for $56,000, Nextech asked for $56,622, and Cox asked for $75,000. But then, the companies will commit their own corporate resources as well as the state funding to complete their proposed project. So, the idea of this funding, they wanted to use these funds as a matching fund in order to tap the state fund, which the cycle ends on Friday this week. So, the alternatives we have is, one, approve the request, and two, do not approve the request, and this will leave the money with the county which can be committed for other projects. So, I'll be happy to answer any question, but here with me, I think the Cox are attending it via Zoom, and Ideatech are also attending it via Zoom, and I think we have Nextech officials with us here.
So, if you maybe like to have the providers address the commission as well before we go on to public comment, that might be a good...
Okay, yeah, we could have, start with Ideatech, you represented.
Okay, we have Nextech.
All right, let's hear from Nextech, please.
Good morning, I'm Casey Davidon. As Farrell mentioned, we are proposing that we have a grant for 226 structures directly north of Salina, 153 structures west of Salina, so south of that I-70 in the Headville area, and 217 structures north of Headville and I-70, which includes Sling County Fire Station District Three. So, we are proposing, it'll be about $95 per household. Are there any questions? I'm not sure what else information you need to know. The grant deadline, as mentioned, is Friday, so we are asking for a letter of commitment of support from you all.
Just a quick question here, is that, is this pretty much a complete wireless type of?
No.
Is this fiber optic type?
This is fiber. This is bringing fiber to the areas that are unserved. This grant, in particular, you cannot overbuild. So, any areas with fiber, we're not allowed to go into. So, any area that is considered unserved and does not have this within their area, that's where we'll apply it to.
And it's just amazing, I live southeast of Salina, and fiber optics just went in there last year, and it's quite the improvement over the old AT&T. But I know, in talking with them over the years, that what their cost was, and I'm sitting here going, "So, you have other monies coming in to take care of this?" Because you can't run the fiber for this amount of money, can you?
Correct. So, you know, and just some history on Nextech, we're currently in Salina at this time. If you guys are familiar with this, are you all?
Yep.
Okay, so, our plan is to continue to vest not only in the city of Salina, but in the county as well. To date, for 2021, and we've collected franchise fees for the city of Salina of $17,031. So, those fees are also for you guys to be able to collect for the county as well. So, property taxes that we've also paid is close to $6,000, and sales tax paid to Sling County and the city in 2021 were over $113,000. So, are there any other grant questions or just questions about us in general that you have?
I think to Commissioner Sparks' point, I believe the max grant, correct me if I'm wrong, in this round is 10 million from the state?
I believe so, yes.
So, yeah, so each of these providers is going after big bucks. We're just a very small part of it, and as Farrell mentioned, they're all committing their own corporate resources as well.
Correct, yes. This would be a match for that, but it's more, the more commitment we can show, the more... But it's more, the more commitment we can show, the more our application stands out. So.
Thank you.
What would be interesting for me to see, and I know that times of the essence here because something has to happen before Friday. But I I would have enjoyed seeing a map overlay of the three different.
You beat me to the question, Commissioner. Thank you.
To see what areas we're actually talking about. I know you described them to us. And then to see how many of those overlap each other, the different companies. And then how how is that going to be resolved if multiple grants are handed out?
Clint, do you want to describe to Jimmy? We actually have that.
Oh, thank you.
I think before they come, also the Ideatech and the Cox, they too presented their map. And two, they've captured all the areas that are underserved.
This is Megan Bottenberg with Cox Communications. And I just, if I can offer any ask, answer any questions that you all have about our proposal, I'd be happy to. Again, we appreciate your willingness to support these projects, Nextech, Ideatech, and Cox. Cox believes that it takes all of us working together. Not only you all, but all of the providers working together to ensure access to all of the unserved areas in Saline County. Again, we are already building out to two hundred and fourteen unserved homes this year, both in Saline County and also in this area. And we, that is with our own private investment. Again, that's showing our commitment to your county. We already have a state franchise agreement with you all as well. And then we have identified an additional seven hundred and seventy two households in Saline County, and the map is attached in our letter of request. So again, we are committed to building out to unserved areas, just as the other providers are as well. And I think with all of us working together and with your support, we can ensure access to all of your residents.
I think the terminology is it's a partnership.
Thank you.
Maybe Farrell can answer this. Is the is the city of Brookville currently, does it have fiber?
No, according to, they have, but according to the FCC, they kind of define broadband that it needs to be twenty five megapixel. Anything below that is underserved. So that's why we, I think the Nextech, the Ideatech, and Cox, they identify areas that are underserved based on how the FCC define the underserved areas.
Okay, I'm gonna have a bunch of questions that keep popping up. But you mentioned that if there is an existing fiber, then the grant monies aren't available to be used, even if the existing fiber is below what the standards are today?
I believe it has to have a certain, like a hundred to twenty, I think. So it's got to meet a certain, a certain, can you think? A certain speed, excuse me. So.
Well, yeah, I don't, okay, there's. Thank you, Lauren, for getting that for us. Well, I, for one, I guess, any other comment from the commission? Any comment from the public?
Aye.
Go to Mike.
Yeah, please.
My name's Tim Munro. I'm on the Rural Broadband Task Force. And I'm very concerned about this, selfishly because of where I live. I live a mile and a half north of I seventy off of Ninth Street, Old Highway eighty one. I operate, we, my wife and I operate two very small businesses and in, out of our home. And we, it's really difficult to operate without high-speed internet in our home. And we've tried very hard to get to get providers to serve our area. And everything from AT&T refusing. We're supposed to be in their territory and they they will not serve our area. I'm unprepared to visit with you. But I encourage, you know, this isn't a toy anymore. This is something that's very essential. It's, I think it should be a property right. It's very similar to to rural electrification and bringing telephone to to rural areas. And my suggestion is that we get behind it and do what we can to get it out there. Because it, like I said, it's it's essential. Everything, I use the internet every day, whether it's downloading photographs to send to clients, to research, doing research on the internet, things like that. So.
Jim, you're definitely not selfish, but your thanks is really welcomed with your work on this committee and and expressing your opinion and.
Okay, thank you. I think there's a big question of, you know, I I I really think there needs to be some stewardship from the providers. And this is the first that I've seen it. So I do applaud the providers for what they're trying to do. It's not just about bottom line for the providers. It's about helping the community. And this, this is very essential. So thank you for listening.
Do you suppose a hundred years ago or plus, they were having this same conversation in regards to a telegraph polls throughout the county?
I would totally agree with that. I would totally agree. And I think it's just another part of the of the process of 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 bringing services to rural America. So.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Well, I know that that broadband in the county was one of the topics and one of the issues that we as a commission were going to address. And I I know that there was a planning taking place and such. It seems like the states just moved a little bit quicker than what we have on this. So now we have to, we need to make some actions to to take advantage of anything the state might be able to assist with. Personally speaking, I I see no reason why we wouldn't approve a letter of for all three of the providers who have requested our support on this to the state. And I would welcome any comments from any other commissioner.
And just firsthand, knowing from where you go, from living in an area where you you don't have anything but a dial-up speed to having a fiber optic, it's a, it's a pretty amazing, yeah, to get the speed and performance that you can get out of it. And it's very, very welcoming to have this. And to think that it would be available to so many more people since this pandemic hit. And you do work from home. So many people work from home now. It's a, it's a situation where we've been forced into requiring it. But if it is not available, you're kind of hooked. So it is a, I think it's a great situation and be able to have these funds available to provide these help. So thank you.
Another concern is the affordability of it.
Yes.
Question I'll ask, is this a one and done for the state? Or will there be other county infrastructure monies made available later?
There will be other infrastructure money available. In fact, we have a meeting coming up over at the chamber this morning to talk about other types of infrastructure. With regard to broadband specifically, I believe there's another round coming out from the feds, probably through the states later in the fall. I think we we certainly could have waited, but we have providers who are ready to go now. And so that's why we wanted to bring the item before the commission at this time.
Very good. Seeing no, no other comments or questions from the public, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we authorize yourself to sign the letters of support.
Second motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one eighty one dash twenty two capital project funds for broadband infrastructure fund request. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose same sign. Motion carried. Good luck to the three providers out there and.
Yes.
And a quick question, Farrell, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
Is this your first big project you've got to be involved in since your tenure with Saline County?
No, this is just one of the big projects.
One of the many. Well, hopefully it'll be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on into informational items. Item number one.
Human Resources Update with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. This reporting period is mid-May to mid-August of two thousand twenty two. We have hired sixteen full-time employees plus an additional fifty six election employees that were processed. Transfers and promotions, we have twelve employees that have moved to a different position or a different status. And we have eleven that are no longer employed during that time period, with three of those actually were retirements. The Miss Laney's activities that we've been working on is online enrollment or open enrollment for preparation of us moving to a qualified high deductible plan beginning ten one, and then also implementing the health savings account. Negotiations with the bargaining units are going on. And then preparation of job descriptions for the new two thousand twenty three positions. Upcoming plans is to fill vacant positions. Currently, as of the writing of this, it's went up on corrections officers to seventeen vacancies plus two over hires, three record specialist vacancies. The transport officer position was filled in-house, so that one's no longer on there. One attorney, seasonal mowers, two home health RNs, a WIC dietitian, immunization and MCH nerds, equipment operator, truck driver. The office technician position that is on there, an offer has been extended and accepted. She has not started yet. Field appraiser, one vacancy, the planning and zoning, emergency management administrative assistant position, and then one expo maintenance assistant. They're actually fully staffed at this time. However, this vacancy is for an upcoming vacancy due to a retirement within that department. We'll continue with the insurance open enrollment process. In-service training day preparation. Then later on in the year, implementation of and planning for the two thousand twenty three salaries. And then we will be opening up the United Way campaign. And that will involve gathering prizes, communicating with employees. And in the past, commissioners have been very supportive of us offering five free one-day-off certificates to encourage giving to the United Way. So unless I hear some objection, I'll continue to provide that as prizes. Our health plan is running at almost ninety eight percent of expenses to funding ratio. This represents about nine months into the current plan year. The dental is running right at what is expected for the expenses to funding. Our HR budget is at fifty three percent, although that's a little low to date. It is in line with historical averages for HR. We will have some increased expenses that occur as a part of our training day in October, so October, so that will level that out. And then I'm available for any questions.
Explain to me, Marilyn, just a little bit better so I can wrap my head around it. Your health plan is at ninety seven percent. Is that, is that the ninety seven percent of that of the annual budget spent? And we still have three months to go or four months to go?
Not necessarily the budget, but what the plan is expected to run at. We never know, you know, claims kind of go up and down. So it's what's expected, what has been, what is planned for the contributions going in to the fund and then where those claims are falling.
So if it read a hundred percent, you're pretty much where you thought you would be at this juncture?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions, Marilyn?
No.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Livestock and Expo Update with David Flaherty, the second director.
Good morning, David.
Morning, Commissioners. So this morning, I'm doing my update, June, July, and August of two thousand twenty two. Our accomplishments on the Expo Center side, we have held sixty one event days. The electric panel on Barn Six was replaced. We did lock in another national show for two thousand twenty three. It's the Miniature Hereford Breeders Association. They will be coming in June, and it would be from the seventeenth through the twenty fourth, twenty fifth, I believe it is, somewhere around in there. We repaired two, two picnic tables that needed new boards put on them. So we got that done. And then on the weed department side, most of the right-of-ways have been sprayed, bind weed has been sprayed. They're currently spraying Johnson grass. The administrative aide just celebrated twenty five years of service. Our weed supervisor is retiring, and we have an Expo Center guy that has moved up. Our weed applicator moved up to the supervisor. And then we have an Expo Center gentleman that moved up and then to the weed department side. So we are hiring an Expo Center person right now. Plans for the future, we are going to get ready to start painting the ballards this fall to winter that were put in. We are sealing around the new doors in Ag Hall. We're going to continue to work with the Hutton Project Manager, and we're going to also continue looking for new events to be brought in. On the weed department side, our fall right-of-way sprays are going to happen probably late September. We're going to get started on the fall spray of the right-of-ways. Our applicator that will be coming in in September, he's currently studying for his CDL and his commercial pesticide license. Budget update, the expo budget used fifty six point seventy nine percent right now. The weed department deposit from chemical sales is eighty seven thousand five seventy seven eighty two, and the budget used there is sixty four point eighty four percent. The weed special equipment fund has seventy six thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollars and eighty seven cents. And the county farm has a two hundred and fifteen thousand seven fifty seven sixteen. And I'm available for any question.
One thing that interests me is a miniature Hereford. I I got to make it over there to see that. That's got to be quite a sight. Question, how does the weed special equipment account accumulate? Where does that monies?
So it's funds that's actually left over on the weed weed department side due to the state statue. I don't remember that number. Funds that are left over in the weed department side will get transferred over there. Is that by the auditor, I believe, is how that happens.
All right, any other questions?
No photos this time?
No. I'm going to start next year. I'm going to do a lot of photos. I've been trying to work on bringing some national events in. So we are going to be next year doing photos of the upgrades and the events coming in with the upgrade system. So.
I was hoping to see Bev's smiling face up there.
It's on Facebook.
After twenty five years, so.
Go out on Facebook. We do, we do.
I have seen it, so.
We do post a lot of pictures of our events and stuff on Facebook for people to see and react. The the Miniature Hereford show coming in, we were originally told about a hundred and eighty head and then a couple other states that we've talked to about this. The Miniature Hereford Show coming in, we were originally told about 180 had, and then a couple other states that we've talked to about this event to try to see what we needed to do to prepare. Some of them are telling us we could hit close to 500.
Mercy. And after you told me this, I did go home and Google it, and I'm thinking, oh, what a cute, my wife goes, we got to get one of those. I don't think so, but it is, they are, they are cute.
My objective goal is to try to bring in one national show per year, because they can only be in the area one time every five to seven years, depending on what show it is.
And just a quick, and I should ask you this outside of here, but it's like here, when you say you spray the right-of-ways, the right-of-way goes from point A to this here, but when you're spraying, you only go from here as far as that little boom goes. So you leave some that's not sprayed from here to the right-of-way?
So depending on what you're spraying, because each chemical has a ground height, you can only be so far up off the ground as you're spraying it. So that takes a factor into there, but yes, our booms, if we do raise them up, we can reach out to the fence lines on a majority of the areas. However, it does depend on if there's any crock there and what we are spraying, because there is chemical we can't spray up against crops, depending on what crop it is. And then there's chemical we can spray right up to it, just can't spray on it, so.
Another question right quick is that if with this Johnson grass that I know you guys are spraying quite a bit here, but if the whole field right behind the right-of-way is Johnson grass, do you get with the landowner at that time, or do you guys go ahead and take care of it?
So what I've done in the past, I have actually reached out to a couple landowners, and I was able to come in and spray that area right there. And then once we spray it, they maintain it from there, because it takes quite a bit to get it knocked down first. And then once it's knocked down, they take over, as long as we continue to stay on top of it in the right-of-way side. It was kind of hard last year, we were shorting employees, so trying to maintain the Johnson grass was the tough part.
I just wanted to ask, I had a couple phone calls, but I just wanted to ask that to you this morning. Okay, thank you, now I know.
Yep.
Thanks.
Other questions? Thank you, David, for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number three.
Planning for Transition to New Jail Facility with Philip Smith Haines County Administrator.
Good morning again, Commissioners. So today we have with us Jim Robertson from VRJS. They are working with the jail transition team that the sheriff has set up, because it turns out that when you build a huge new building, there are some logistical issues around actually moving into that building. So we have started that planning process, and Jim's here to give us an update this morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to Salina, Jim.
Oh, thank you, Commissioners, it's good to be back. Every time I come back, there's a little bit of change, and just driving up Knight Street, there's a new shop here and a new shop over there, so it's good to come back. But I want to go back for a moment, just on a personal note. The conversation about technology is just fascinating. You know, I grew up in a very rural area, and I remember when we got our first TV, if anybody can remember when there wasn't a TV. But I also remember being on a party line phone system, which had some nice advantages to it, if you wanted to listen in. But how technology just evolves and how it plays into our daily lives is so important now. We rely on something, and then when it's not there, we really get frustrated. And so I want to build on that with the transition process, is that when I started in corrections, the technology that we used was a big key. That was it, that opened the lock, that closed the lock, and that's all we had to worry about in moving into a new facility. Well, your transition team and your building is faced with a much different set of circumstances in terms of how that building is intended to operate. Things are much different now, much better now than they were before. And so that building is a tool for the community and the sheriff's office to use. Defining its operations on the day that you move in is a major task, and I applaud the county and the sheriff's office for understanding that we don't wait a couple of months before we move in to start this process, we need to start it now. And so graciously, you've asked me to come back, work on this for a little bit, and offer some guidance and support. And it's an exciting time for me to have been involved in this project back when it failed the first time, and then when it succeeded the second time, and to see that building coming up out of the ground yesterday when I was out at the site. So we've been asked to have a very defined role in working with the transition team. We believe very strongly that it is the owners and operators of that building who have to define its operation, not the outside consultant. We can help troubleshoot items if we think you've missed something, we can help organize the process, and we think that's probably the best role for us at this point. And so a couple of things that we've been working on and things that we'll be working on when I go back out this afternoon. Clearly, we conducted a kickoff meeting back on July 6th and 7th, and there was a group of staff that came together, a group of folks that participated in a two-day training program. I was off-site, an associate of mine, Alan Richardson, was on-site. And we took the team through an understanding of what are the tasks and the steps that are before them. And it helped kind of frame the conversation and the expectation of when we have to start certain tasks, what's the timeline associated with those tasks, and who has to be involved in those. And so it was, in my opinion, a great eye-opener for some in terms of the work that is before, but it also helped organize the project. And so one of the things that came out of that was, we took a first cut at developing a master transition plan. And we had that document, we've shared it with the team and with others. We put that document together that is, I don't know, 20 pages long, maybe something, I can't remember exactly, but it has a running column of the task that is before the team, before the sheriff's office and others, who, what that task is defined as in terms of what has to be accomplished, who participates in that. But most important, what is the date that that task has to be concluded? And so we've put together a draft plan, we're sharing with folks, it's going to be a draft plan until close to when the building opens, because things will be adjusted and tweaked. But in order to develop that plan, we had to start with the intended opening date and work backwards to identify hiring staff, training staff, getting the building equipped, furnished, writing certain documents for the project. And so that's where the team is focusing now on some of the earlier tasks. One of our key responsibilities is to provide some oversight and to troubleshoot, and so I met with the team yesterday afternoon. I'll be meeting with them again today, just to kind of make sure that we're not forgetting something. But the most important task that we are working on right now is what is called scenario development, where the team is taking a deep dive into how we currently operate, but more importantly, how we intend to operate in the new facility. As I mentioned before, the building's a tool, it doesn't answer all of the operational questions, but this is an opportunity for the operators of that building to build on good policies and practices, but to discard those that are driven by your current building that just don't work for you and won't work in the new facility. We don't want to lose this opportunity. The challenge with that is it is very hard for someone who has worked in that building for so many years to think differently about new operations and like, and not just build on, well, we do it that way now, we'll just do it that way in the new facility. That may be good for some practices, but certainly disadvantage for other practices. And so their challenge is to think outside of our current building. The three folks that I am working with out there understand it, embrace it, and have really taken the bull by the horn, not the mini Hereford, but the bull by the horn, in thinking about things differently. And that is really gratifying from my perspective, to see them rolling up their sleeves, working on this, taking on that challenge. They have a limited window to create these documents. The due date is October the 1st to have them all wrapped up. That was a date that was established that will get modified and changed as we go forward. But these scenarios that are being written are detailed. They really get down into the weeds in some respects for looking at operations, but they identify who performs certain tasks, why we perform those tasks, what's the equipment that is needed to perform that task, what are the hours and days that that task might be achieved, who are the people that are involved in that task? It really digs into it. One of the things that we talked about is how to create these documents. Some people like just to have a narrative, something on a piece of paper, just a step-by-step analysis of the process, how that process is to occur. Other folks like to have kind of a flow chart that we look at, so we have a nice visual. We're going to do a combination of those two. The team is taking the first cut at the draft scenarios, they send them to us. We respond to questions or comments or concerns, did you forget this, why are you doing that, what's the logic behind that? We go through a couple of drafts of each scenario, and then we come back and for certain scenarios, we're going to create this flow chart, this visual flow of the operations. I shared with the team yesterday afternoon what one of those might look like. Right now, we're saying that's probably a good thing, it's not for every scenario, but it's going to be for certain ones. And so we have a short time period to work on some of the scenarios as it relates to the rest of the project. But the good news is, is that the team's out at the site, so they have their own space to work at. They have a couple of days a week that the whole team is there, Jeremiah is there full-time. I will offer that at some point, I think the team, the full team, the three-person team will be more involved than just two days a week. We'll cross that bridge when it comes, and there may be other folks that have to participate. Our role is to be a resource, not to tell them how to operate the building. I will say that the sheriff, county administrator, and others have said, we're going to let the team work, we're not going to get involved in that process. We want to be informed, we want to understand what is happening, but let's let them take this and work on it by themselves. That's really difficult for many counties, because folks who have been so invested in this project over the years want to now be here at the end when we are defining the operations, and it's hard to stay away. And so that's the good news about being out at the site. I will say that the sheriff did pop in yesterday afternoon, and he stayed for a few minutes, and his comment was, if you don't want me here, you've got to lock the door. So I think they have a locksmith out there today, but I'm not sure. But anyway, the good news is the process has started, you've got a great team in place to work on that. We're going to be the resource that we can for help troubleshoot the project, but this is, this is your building, this is their project. The consultants offer a limited role in this to help you through it. And while we may have a bias on how things should operate, we only offer that bias as a point of conversation, not as a recommendation. So, questions?
Questions, Jim?
You can tell I'm from the East Coast, I just started talking, kept going.
No, thank you for your efforts and time and your guidance, you know, it's like, yeah, I'm sure.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
I'm sure that this is going to be a dynamic type document as you go forward, and it is important that we work as many of the bugs out of this prior to the opening and.
Yep.
And I appreciate the committee's work in doing this.
And let's not be, have the blinders on, not everything is going to work exactly as we hoped when we move into that facility. There'll be hiccups along the way, there'll be hiccups in the first couple of months as you work it out. What we want to do is manage those surprises, so that they're very few as we go in. Absent this process, there'd be a lot of surprises on the day that you move in, so.
And I for one, Jim, appreciate you, and I call it adult supervision, and I need as much of that as I can get, so thanks again.
I appreciate that, so, anyway, thanks for having me back, appreciate being a part. This is the twilight of my career, and it's nice to see this one come together, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thanks.
Item number four.
Commissioners' Comments.
Comments from the commission.
Nope, I really don't.
See, now we'll go item number five.
Announcements.
And I think, Jamie, you might have a couple?
I have a couple. So Friday, around 6 o'clock, Saline County was notified by the Secretary of State's Office that we would be partaking in two recounts, one for state treasure and the other one for the constitutional amendment. Then, so we worked diligently over the weekend to get all of that scheduled and inform everyone and get everything going. And then we were informed that they had until 5 o'clock Friday to finalize payment and decide what counties will be involved. Or 5 o'clock Monday, sorry. So yesterday about 6 o'clock, we received notice that we are not part of either one of those recounts, so we will not need that meeting tomorrow afternoon, so that one has been canceled. There is still a state treasure and constitutional amendment recount, but it was just narrowed down to just a few counties, so we were not one of those. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was, you know, citizens of Saline County are used to getting their change of value notice in March from the appraisers office. They're also used to getting their tax statement in November from the treasurer's office. This year was the first year that we were required to send out what's called the Notice of Estimated Ad Valorem Taxes. So that's a new notice for citizens throughout the county. And what this is telling everyone is that during the year, obviously, all the taxing entities are preparing their budgets currently, and it is giving the citizens information on what those budgets are estimated to, their proposed budgets, the estimated taxes that will be. So if entities such as the county even wants to raise a dollar more than they did last year in the taxes, they have to have a special, what's called revenue-neutral right hearing, so that is giving them the difference in what their taxes could be based on the current proposed budget. Obviously, those could change depending on all of those budget hearings, and the dates those hearings will be held, and they are welcome to attend any of those. So if they have any questions, they are welcome to call our office. If they have questions on the actual budget of that taxing entity, we would ask them to reach out to those entities that they have questions on.
Very good, thank you. All right, we have one more item on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss labor negotiations for 15 minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:18.
So move.
Before a second, could I ask for a two-minute recess?
10:20 then.
Okay, thank you, second motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we go into executive session for employer-employee negotiations for.
20.
17 minutes. Reconvene at 10:20.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
There we go. Motion carries. Motion carries. Any other items discussion from the commission? Not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second. Removed. And second, we adjourn. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, 4-0. We're adjourned.